I call this meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights School District to order. Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Cobal.
Here.
Ms. Peppler.
Here.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Yes.
And next we have awards and recognitions. Is this the person here? Is that me? It's your person. Okay, Mr. Contapelli, can you step forward, please? So that's not under word, that's under, okay.
Well, I introduce myself.
Come on up, right to the.
Be at the mic, so the cameras can picture you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
We didn't have awards and recognitions.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'll introduce myself. I'm Reno Contapelli, I'm from the House School Board Association. I am the Northeast Regional Manager. OSBA, which you guys are members of, and we thank you for your membership, consists of five regions. I'm the Northeast Regional Manager. The Northeast Region is literally 19 counties, 230 schools, so we are literally the largest region. In all those regions, it's my responsibility to be like the liaison between all the schools and OSBA. I did spend 20 years on the Cuyahoga Heights School Board, retired, thought I retired last year, and then they hired me to come up in the Northeast. At our spring conference on March 4th, two of your board members were getting awards. We liked the first awards were Years of Service Award. We start at 10 years and go all the way up to, literally, I had someone this year had 45 years on a school board. Yeah, that's what I said, I got out of 20. But Cal Zucker, on behalf of the Ohio School Board Association and President Penrod, we'd like to congratulate you on 10 years of service. So here you go. And then one of your board members got, was called the Award of Achievement. This is not an easy award to get, because it's based upon a point system. And not only do you have to be involved locally, but you have to be involved on a state and federal level also. It's hard to do it once. One of your board members did it twice. That's incredible. And he couldn't make it on March 4th, so I promised him I'd come out here to Cleveland Heights, but Reno Register, congratulations on being on your second Award of Achievement.
Thank you. Our fall conference is October 7th. I'll have to.
Yeah, please do. Thank you.
Just let you know, our fall conference is October 7th. Capitol Conference is always the week after in November there. And then I'm sure, hopefully, some of you guys will be down at the Board Leadership Institute next month, okay? Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ron.
Thank you.
And Cal.
And Cal, yes.
Good work, it really means that you've been engaged and busy. Exactly, so we appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, do we have any statements from the audience? Thank you. Patty, how are you? Patty Carlisle is here to speak about Issue Two, the Operating Levy on May 5th.
I know I'm the only person on that list, and this is a short and sweet meeting, so I will keep my remarks short and sweet as well. So yes, I am a co-chair on the Levy Committee from Citizens for Our Heights Schools. Issue Two, it will be on the ballot on May 5th. We're a community that supports our schools, no matter, you know, where your kids go, there's a lot of people in this community that want our schools to succeed, and we all should want our schools to succeed, because it's important to all of us. So we will have an opportunity to continue to support our schools on May 5th with this Operating Levy. I wanted to thank the Board for the support that they've given in giving us, you know, clear and transparent data. Scott's done a great job of making our job a little bit easier by managing the funds here in the district really well. I wanted to say a few words about the levy. This is the smallest in decades, at 5.9 mils. It's the absolute minimum that we need to keep our classrooms vital, to keep teachers, you know, with all the resources they need, to make sure classroom sizes stay small, to keep our graduation rate high and growing. We face some challenges, though. The last operating levy that we passed was in 2011, and we've had a facilities bond between, which tends to be a little confusing, but this levy won't be able to be used for any sort of building or facilities. So this isn't a one-on-top, this is for our classrooms. Some of the other challenges we face are from the state. The state has actually cut more than $2 million from the district just in the past couple of years, and property tax collections have been falling. So we're challenged, but we're excited to, you know, get everybody out and to vote on May 5th for this levy that is certainly crucial to the health of our schools. So yeah, I just kind of wanted to thank the Board for your support and to let people know if you haven't learned about it, this is actually the only issue on the ballot, and it is Cinco de Mayo, so you can go out and get your vote sticker and, you know, have a good time after that. But we just wanted to make sure everyone knows that this is coming up, it's super important, and thank you for all your support.
Thank you. All right, so next we're going to move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, so we have two field trips to approve. One is Gary Professional Development School, 4th grade science class field trip to the Cuyahoga Valley National Park, and that's Mr. Mendez's class. And the second one is Cleveland Heights 9th and 12th grade French student visiting France. So this trip is one year away.
Right.
So she's planning ahead, so she can get that approved.
Okay, I can take these together, can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? Nope, Mr. Gainer.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Okay, then next we have Mr. Bob Ivory, if he would come forth. They give us an update on the Students of Promise Program. As we recall, this is a program that the county is supporting, so he wants to tell us how it's going at the high school.
I sure will.
And initiative that they've done thus far.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and Board Members, and Dr., I was about to say the former Superintendent. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, and to the Cleveland Heights learning community. I want to preface my statements, because the reason why this is so impactful to me right now, because I remember the conversation a little over a year ago, as we were putting the model together with Cuyahoga County. And Cleveland Heights was not a part of that conversation yet, and I pushed and pushed and got galvanized support. And then obviously, we made this happen, so maybe about three or four weeks ago, I was here at Heights High School, and within the Students of Promise Room, where Ms. Mims is the linkage coordinator, and I saw about nine or 10 students all over her in the room. And so I just had a moment and said, like, wow, from a year ago, to see those students in her classroom was really, really endearing. So I just want to take a minute, and she's obviously on break, and she's out of town, but I asked her to prepare some of the remarks that I'm going to make, and then I'll kind of wrap it up as far as some things that are upcoming. Right now, currently, at the high school, she has approximately 37 students that are a part of the program. And there are 15 male students, and the remainder 22 students are females. And how this came about, I think she has here that on January 12th is when she actually began recruiting with the aid of the Assistant Principals and also Mr. Ross, that provided our initial cohort at Cleveland Heights High School. So that process yielded, you know, some 30, 40 students. But we have a cohort that we track, which will be the 37 that she has, but there's also students that indirectly participate in the program, so it's actually a larger number. But for right now, we have a roster of 37 students at the high school. She also states that there are about six students that have been referred either by the teacher, we have students that come referred by parents, and then I think we're doing such a, I believe, nice job that students refer themselves. Literally, I would like to participate in this program, which is really what we want, is that buy-in, that tie-in from the kids that says, I would like to participate in this program. So there are students that actually, you know, kind of sign themselves up, and then we go through the process of the parents. There's a criteria, but the criteria is very broad, that it really encompasses the majority of your population of students. All of her students are 9th graders, she says, except for four. So the target is 9th grade, some of them may be 9th grade repeaters, but I believe she does have a few for upper-class students. She sees about 20 students on average a day, and because in some other districts, they have an actual class period, and hopefully, we will evolve at some point where the model or the program can actually be a class time, where they meet regularly every period, like an elective or so forth, or once a day. But she actually engages them sometime throughout the day, and she says about an average of 20 students that she physically has direct contact with, and more than likely, that usually happens through some type of arrangement with the teachers, where they're either pulled out before class, after class, but at least throughout the entire week, she has contact with all students that are participating in the program. The relationship with the teachers are going extremely well. She states there's about a cohort, about five teachers that she regularly is engaged with, which would consist of what we call is that Graduation Action Team, just a core group of teachers that are specific to that cohort of 9th graders, that she stays in constant communication with, updates, she gives out weekly kind of progress sheets to the students, which is the concept of the L Card for those that participate in sports. It's the same principle of how you're doing in that class, and not just grades, and not just A, B, or so forth, effort, participation, attendance, citizenship behavior. So we really track all those different domains weekly, which every student, which the teachers provide that information. After-school tutoring began on March 23rd, that's work in progress. She did have, I say it there, about four or five students that initially participated. I created for all the four schools kind of a contract concept, because that's just a battle. Students that may not be doing well, but do not realize that we do have resources for tutoring, but they have not always found their way to after-school tutoring. So I created kind of a contract between the student, the parent, the linkage coordinator, that they can, you know, kind of raise expectations and hold each other accountable in order to participate. I did throw a little caveat in there, and definitely thank you for approving the Morehouse Trip, that those 10 students that have been selected, they must participate in the tutorial piece of the program. We just felt that that was the least that they can do, as we're engaging them with this out-of-school time activity to take them to Atlanta, is to make sure academically that they are, you know, investing in themselves, and since we have the resources for tutoring, that they participate. There's a weekly contact with parents, that all the linkage coordinators are doing, and Ms. Mims is doing a great job in engaging the families. Once a week, based on whatever pre-arranged time, she has conversations and shares the updates and so forth with the students, but that still is such a wide range of contact, because parents call all the time. That relationship between that linkage coordinator and that parent, even I've had some, you know, linkage coordinators say, I get calls at 10 at night, I get calls on Saturday, because that linkage coordinator is really that extended support system in more ways than one that the parents really utilize, not just for that weekly call, but also to engage that parent with what's going on with the student, not just in the school, but also at home and in the community. Just to give you an example, there was one situation, and not in this district, but the student was AWOL, and the first person that, meaning was missing from home, the first person that was called was the linkage coordinator. And I just felt that that is kind of indicative of the type of relationships that we establish with our parents. The out-of-school time activities, and I realize that field trips, you know, create some kind of dynamics at some point. As far as, you know, taking kids out of school, we do want to protect instruction time, but also believe that exposure to field trips is a huge component of the program, to be able to expand what we call students outside of their six-block radius of awareness, to provide opportunities for them to go into the community, and also to experience not only activities or field trips, but people that they can connect to, and they can connect what's going on to the classroom, what's going on outside in the world. We were able to join some 70 students that were a part of the other three school districts, which are Maple, Garfield, and Warrensville Heights, to see Selma. We actually secured Tower City and had a private showing of the movie when it came out, and I believe we had about 17 students from Heights. That was the first activity. I think we had just signed a contract, and maybe two or three weeks later, I got some phone calls of, that's not the way it goes in this district, that we don't plan field trips in less than 10 days. But however, there are opportunities that we just have to take advantage of, and that was one of them, and I think the students responded. And I was just so proud when I saw those Heights kids come in, and they, you would have thought they were in the program since last summer, like the other three districts, because they definitely engage right away. And I mention that trip in particular, because in addition to the Morehouse Trip, I've been able to establish some relationships that allowed us to add Selma to our tour. So we will go to Selma, we will walk the Edmund Pettus Bridge, we will have a tour guide who was on the bridge 50 years ago. We will attend Tuskegee Institution, it's going to actually open their campus for us just for a private tour of the university. We will also go to Huntsville, Alabama, and Alabama A&amp;M, who has a national STEM program that invited us to see not only the campus, but to see their STEM program. So that's just a type of exposure that I believe that the students here at Heights are taking advantage of. Just last week, Denise Harris, from Channel 5 Anchor, was at the high school, and she spoke to about eight students, fully engaged, like I said, I told Mr. Ross that these students were just awesome, they were just so engaged. It was supposed to be for 30 minutes, she stayed for like an hour, and also committed to come back specifically to Cleveland Heights and work with those students. She also called me a few days later and said she's going to do a feature on the Students of Promise Program, and would like to speak to students from every school as far as how they feel the program is helping them. Finally, I think it's important to know that upcoming, when we return from Morehouse, I will be conducting a year-end kind of symposium, to kind of sum up and wrap up the first year that includes all the districts. But I just initially wanted to make sure that every four learning community sees what we attempted to do this school year. Case Western Reserve will do our evaluation, how much of it they will have to prepare and present by May, the first week in June, I'm not sure, but we do collect data ourselves. There will be some empirical data we can report on, but the most part is former State Senator Jacide Prentice, who's the architect and the framer of this model, when it was the governor's initiative, she will be the keynote speaker. And I believe she will bring and be able to kind of summarize what this really means for this community, and for Cuyahoga County to have this model being piloted, and other scholars and so forth that will speak to the achievement gap model, but mainly, we'll be able to celebrate our students at the end of the school year. So I guess in closing, I'm very, I'm personally satisfied with how, one, the linkage coordinator, Erin Mims, I think is doing an awesome job, I think the kids have really accepted her and have bought into what we're trying to do. The teachers have been great, as far as it's been a progression, as far as just understanding the model, but definitely working collaboratively with the program. Mr. Ross has been awesome and availing, you know, his opportunities to do some things that the other district have already begun, and definitely the behind-the-scenes, your business office, it's just been a great experience, and I'm looking forward to building upon this. Our Summer Bridge Program should start two weeks in June, which, that is a four-week program, in which we will probably, once we come back from Morehouse, begin to aggressively look into the middle schools and start to work with their principals, and see if they can begin to identify students that will be incoming freshmen. Unfortunately, you know, just looking at grades and some data, you will have some NRS, you will have some repeaters, unfortunately, that hopefully, we can still have our hands on over the summer and participate in the Summer Bridge Program. The encouraging piece of this, there's, I think in one district, we had like eight kids that were 9th grade repeaters, but by the second marking period, they had earned their five credits, and they're now full-fledged 10th graders, so I don't see that being any differently in this district, as we work with and keep our hands on academically, socially, and emotionally, those students that do not have and will not have the credits to be 10th graders, but hopefully, keep them engaged over the summer through our Summer Bridge, and then pick right back up in the fall to help them get back on track. And I'm open for any questions.
Anybody have questions?
Sounds good.
I have one. Bob, I noticed from a lot of your materials that you send, and the newsletters and everything, that, or at least I believe, that our breakdown of male and female is a little bit different than the other schools.
Yeah, I think your breakdown.
Why would that be?
Well, in initial conversations, when the model was presented, it's really the district that determines who you would like to most strengthen, or where your needs lie. And then in initial conversation with Mr. Ross, it was the young ladies.
Okay.
He specifically said that our young ladies, you know, really can use some additional support, so I think that's where that number is different. But in another district, like Maple, it's the total opposite. I think there's only a couple of young ladies in the program. Garfield and Warrensville are pretty evenly balanced, as far as male, female.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Yes. Okay, so the final item is the first reading of our NEOLA policies, and they're included in your notebooks for you to read through and make any notifications, which you deem necessary. And that's it for the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, so we don't need, should we provide any questions to you in advance of the next meeting?
Yes, to me, and/or to Dr. Wiley.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, so moving on to personnel, can I take Items E. 1 through 7 together, I assume? All right, can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments on the personnel items? Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
All right, moving on to Business Services. Hello?
Good evening.
These have to all be taken separately, one in five, right?
Sure.
Okay, so first, can I have a motion to approve Item F. 1?
So moved. Second.
So this is, yeah, this is the Board's formal action to approve the memorandum between the Cuyahoga County and the Board to provide the sheriff deputies when the high school relocates to Wiley next year and the year after. And so this is something that the county asked for, they asked for formal resolution. And in this action also, this provides the indemnification requirement that the county also required and asked for. So the agreement is unchanged, it's identical to the one that you saw, and that was reviewed back in the late winter.
Steve, are we doing any training, or any opportunities for the sheriff's deputies to visit Heights while we're still in our current building, to get acclimated, to learn procedures, as opposed to even get familiar with our students, or are we doing that?
Yeah, Brian Loretz is working with the county to identify those sheriff deputies who are interested in the program, participating with us, and then we will do an orientation program with those employees before they come onboard. Yes.
Anything else? And Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to approve Item F. 2?
So moved. Second.
So this is a routine action, but a critical action. This is the action that will allow us to enter into an agreement to have our trash all the way, and we do that through the Cooperative Purchasing Program with the House Schools Council, so, but this is something that we do on a regular basis.
We do that once every three years, or something like that?
It looks like it's a three-year agreement, yes, that is correct.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to approve Item F. 2?
So moved. Second.
So this is a routine action, but a critical action. This is the action that will allow us to enter into an agreement to have our trash all the way, and we do that through the Cooperative Purchasing Program with the House Schools Council, so, but this is something that we do on a regular basis.
We do that once every three years, or something like that?
It looks like it's a three-year agreement, yes, that is correct.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Peppler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
All right, motion, please, to approve Item F. 3.
So moved. Second.
Okay, so this is the lease, the formal lease agreement, you have previously approved a lease proposal between the school district and Lutheran East to provide access to their gymnasium for volleyball and basketball practice for our students while the high school is relocated at the Wiley campus, and so.
Not practice, competition?
They'll do practice, and they'll do competitions, both, yes.
Okay, so my question is, why in the terms, why is it Wednesday 4:30 to 10, and Saturday 10 to 10?
Because that's what was available, and that's what we negotiated in working with Kristin Hughes, the athletic director, in terms of what was available between them and what Kristin wanted, and that would serve our needs the best.
So is Kristin then able to schedule competitions during those times for both?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyhow.
And I'll be honest with you, she has quite an elaborate arrangement of who's going where, and I'll be honest, I don't have it all internalized. She's got a spreadsheet that's many pages long of all the different activities and where they're going, and so.
I wasn't aware that they were doing that, or we hadn't discussed, that there were going to be that many practices there, I thought they would be at the gyms at Wiley, but that's okay.
I, yeah.
I just, I was surprised to see in the agreement, it spelled out for just those two days, and then thinking about the competitions.
So we're only using their facilities, we're only going to be practicing there twice a week?
No.
That, yeah.
Competitions.
Well, we have competitions, we can use the space for whatever we need it for, or whatever we want.
So primarily, it would more likely be the competitions there?
I would think, but she's using every available space and time she can to accommodate and meet her needs with the various athletic programs we have, so.
Question, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, is that $85 an hour, is that a good rate, or?
That's a very good rate.
Sure seems to be.
Yes, it is. It's a very good rate.
So we have to carry the insurance at that point?
We will have to name them as an additional insured, which is pretty standard practice when we use somebody else's facility.
Now, we don't know exactly how many hours, the hours that are listed in the contract are available to us, so we're paying for all those hours whether we use them or not?
Well, that's a good question, and in the negotiation, it was agreed that we would pay for them whether we use them or not.
Yeah.
Because basically, they are giving us the right to use it, and they are, in essence, turning away other potential users so that we can have that right.
Yeah.
And so that was the deal that I had to strike with them. In talking with Kristin, I think we'll be using it pretty much all the available time that we've rented it.
Oh, in regard to athletics during construction, when can we anticipate a site plan showing egress and placement of temporary facilities at the football field? When do we anticipate seeing that?
I'll have to ask, Eric, I, you know, I know they have a site, a basic site utilization plan, as you know, the FAC asked for that. I was going to share it with the Board of Education in one of my Friday updates through Superintendent Dixon, and, but yes, the details of that have not been established yet, but soon, we're, obviously, we're going to have to work through all those details. I think we have a basic framework, we've sat down and have a conceptual idea that it's going to work, and how it's going to work, but I haven't put pencil to paper to actually mark that out in a way that I can share with anyone yet.
Anything else? Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
All right, please, a motion to approve item F.4.
So moved.
Second.
So these are our regular quarterly contract agenda.
Any questions, comments, gentlemen? Mr. Gainer.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask Steve some?
No, no.
Well, I got to run the clock after. Are we all, has everything moved into Milliken? Are we all...
Not quite. We're still working on it.
Okay. Are we still doing construction to get prepped or...
We're not doing construction. We're doing a little minor preparation of the space to get ready, but not quite there yet.
If you have those kinds of questions under old, maybe old business, possibly, these aren't under the regular business services items for...
Okay, I figured he's already at the podium, but you know.
Well...
Bring him back, we'll make him watch.
We can bring him back.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I shall return.
Sit in the front row.
We've done it too late.
Okay, moving on to finance. We can take them together? Okay, I need a motion to approve items G.1 through 3.
So moved.
Well, you beat them to it that time.
Second. I will second it.
Anything you'd like to add?
Just that these are the standard monthly financial reports. We have two confirming purchase orders, which you'll remember, the auditors require that if someone doesn't after-the-fact purchase order over $3,000, we have to bring it to the board. So that's what the two purchase orders you see here are, and I think they were just lack of adequate planning or some confusion as to who was responsible for the purchase order. So that was the only thing that was with them. So was a timing issue, but we do bring those to you for approval. And then we also have two increases to appropriations, which actually is something new. You've probably never seen that before, and that also is another audit requirement that we are doing formal resolutions to increase appropriations rather than what we used to do, which was kind of, you know, move the money back and forth and then come to you at the end of the year with those kind of adjustments. So audit stuff, not fun, but necessary.
Anything? Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Zucker.
Yes.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Pepler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
All right, on to Board President's Report. I guess the thing that I'd like to say is that we had a nice meeting, productive meeting last week with the Cleveland Heights City Council. We need to schedule something with University Heights, but we talked about a lot of issues that are overlapping, obviously, the work on the high school and a lot of the plans around Cedar and Lee. But I think it was overall a very productive meeting, and I look forward to having the same conversation with University Heights. We are moving forward in a really positive way on the design of the high school. We got a lot of great feedback at the last meeting, at the last work session from the community. And so I invite everybody who hasn't been engaged to become engaged or remain engaged in that process because we're moving forward and a lot of decisions will be made over the next month or so. So that's really it for Board President's Report. Unfinished business.
Now Steve's coming in.
Sure.
Is that unfinished or is that new?
Well, I think it's unfinished if you want to raise it as a separate issue. Sorry, I said new.
I tried to have a second.
My apologies.
I got a bunch of oddball facility stuff, but I figure everyone's here, so we can... The, I guess, is it possible to get a list of non-issue 81 capital projects for what we're doing this summer? I wasn't sure what we're doing.
Yes.
I'd be curious, I'd be very curious to see what we're doing there because we still got those projects.
Yes, I will share those with the board.
The, I know the C. Cleveland Heights is all, because I was under the impression that we were just delaying the Gateway Project. I didn't realize it was bumping all the way into '16. Is it possible for us to bid out or even do the underground, if we have utilities that are tying into Lee Road, is it possible for us to bid those out and do that work in '15 as opposed to having to tear up Lee Road in '16?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We, that was one of the things that was requested of us, that we meet with the city to make sure that we had good coordination between the Lee Road project and our project. So yes, we will do that.
I'm sure they don't care if we tear up Cedar Road because that's another year.
Right.
But I thought we were doing it in '15, but if we're going all the way into '16...
Yes.
Let's see, other ones. Is it possible to do a, because we've done household projections based on student enrollment, is it possible to get like a dot version of that? We have the hotspot one. If we could do households on a plot out where our eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders live, I'd be very curious to see, I should have asked this before we were discussing Wiley, I'd be very curious to see where our high school students live in conjunction to...
Yes.
What, because that'd be...
I can share that with you. We have that, so...
I keep asking for it, and by the time I eventually, it will be done. Construction photos of Wiley, are we doing those or...
Yes.
Okay, because I haven't seen any, that's why.
Okay, we have, every week, we have a set of photos that are provided to us, so I will forward those to the board.
And the reason, when we get to the high school, I mean, Wiley's a relatively, it's not as, I think, even for those interested in the design, it's not as interesting as what we're doing at the high school. I just want to make sure that when we get to the high school, that we're going to be really churning out this stuff because I think that's going to be really interesting. Let's see, and I guess my last one, oh, two, second last. Are we planning on doing any kind of a public presentation of the final materials from the architects for the high school, or is it going to be more of, are we just sort of, when we get it, that's it? Or are we going to do more of a big thing?
By materials, do you mean materials or do you mean design and materials?
Well, I don't want to call it a dog and pony show, but more of a presentation, like a social room presentation. Are we planning on doing something like that or is it going to be more of, because we've been wading into the pool so long, we're already in?
What's in the works right now, I've had some conversations with Dr. Dixon about having an April facilities work session. And remember, we originally were not planning to have one in April, but I think along...
Well, we were planning to have one, but not about facilities.
Thank you.
Right.
Yes, exactly, not about facilities, not have a facilities work session. But I think we, I'd like, I'm suggesting that we have one, for the very reason you're talking about, an opportunity to see the final exterior, to see some interior renderings, to get a better understanding of the basic materials on the interior of the building that we'll be utilizing, one last look at the final plans, those kinds of things. But beyond that, no, we've not planned a large community meeting at the social room or anything like that.
But we're going to use, what we're talking about now is to use the April work session as an opportunity, sort of a light version of that as opposed to a big...
Right, because on May 5th, then, at a regular, May 4th, the regular meeting on May 4th, right, we will be bringing to the board the final DD documents as well as the DD estimate for your formal approval. So this will give you time in April to see, get a chance, for everybody to get a chance to see and preview what that is going to look like and what you're going to be asked to approve at the May 4th meeting.
Okay, yeah, because I definitely think it's, if we're signing off on something, we have to have at least an opportunity where the public is going to see that because we know the scrutiny we're going to have. And then the last one, which is paint and carpet for this room, when are we going to freshen the stained carpet and the battleship gray walls? Is that going to...
Didn't make the cut for this year's PI list.
I'll have to talk to the superintendent about that because I know Darlene wants that to happen. And when we do that, if we could, I think our audio folks would probably like it, if we could add another light above you because for the speakers, usually it's a little dark over there as well.
I don't want them to see me.
Well, yeah. Okay, those were all my questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any new business? Board committee reports.
You go first.
I always go first.
No, I usually go first.
So I've got three. The University Heights Technology Committee, I think I reported a month ago that the University Heights Technology Committee suggested iPads for the council members, and that went through, council passed that, so now they're in the process of training. So it's going along really well. It was a good committee, they did a real nice job. So that's that. Reaching Heights, the annual spelling bee is April 15th at the high school at 7:00 PM. We hope you'll come. I want to thank my fellow board members for not only sponsoring a team but being a team again this year, so thank you very much. And then the, on March 23rd, there was a PTA council meeting. A couple of things that happened at that meeting, the council of PTAs voted unanimously to endorse the levy, so we want to thank the PTA for that. And they had a real nice presentation regarding the food services. We had someone from the food services come and speak to them, and they voiced all their concerns, and it was a very nice dialogue, so that's all I've got.
Sure, I've got two, one's a committee, one's not. The committee is the Strategic Planning Committee, has continued to work. Next week, as you know, there will be a joint meeting with the members of the board and the Strategic Planning Committee, working on the strategic plan for the next five years for the district. All the data has been collected. I forget the exact number, Angie would have it. Is it over 1,000? How many respondents did we get online and in the personal settings? It was, oh, I know it was over 1,000, of people taking the surveys and offering comments and coming, 1,834 respondents for that, which is fantastic. So all that data is being collected and collated and will be presented next week as we take the next steps. We're still on target for coming up with plans that we presented to the board for us to adopt or not adopt in midsummer, I think. And the only other thing was, I just wanted to report, again, a bit of good news for the district, was that I had the pleasure of chaperoning the vocal music department's program, The Singers and Choir, as they took their annual trip, which I know Mr. Register has taken with them before, down to Memphis and Nashville to study the music scene down there, the vocal music scene down there. They, the group was about 70 students, and they sang, they toured and sang at the National Civil Rights Museum in Memphis. They sang at St. Luke's Methodist Church, Palm Sunday. They did impromptu singing at various bowling alleys and restaurants along the way. They did, they recorded two songs in the famous RCA Studio B, which is where Elvis and the Everly Brothers and Roy Orbison and a bunch of other people recorded, The House of a Thousand Hits. Our group has recorded two songs there, see if they become one of the thousand hits. The House of Two Hits for High Tide. A thousand and two. And then did a master class at Fisk University. The singers did one there as well. So it was a fantastic trip, and everyone seemed to have a really great time, well worth the effort and focus that the administration, that the district provides, that the parents provide, and I think the students got a lot out of it, and everyone had a good time.
First one, facilities accountability committee had a meeting, good discussion, sort of three items, I'll share. One was there's a lot of discussion, I think there's a meeting with the superintendent in regards to solar panels, solar array, pretty much, a lot of what they were discussing was actually, there are basically investors or companies who will, you have a roof, they'll put the array in, you do an arrangement with them where they will sell the power back that's generated back to you at either at or below market rate. So, and then they maintain it, and at the end of the certain period of time, then the array becomes yours. So I think there is a lot of discussion as far as the possibility and viability of that, in that it would not cost us anything from an installation standpoint or maintenance standpoint, theoretically could actually save us some money. One of the big questions at least would be, what percent of our total electricity would that be? Are we talking a couple of points or are we talking 10 or 20%? So I think there's a lot, that was an area that there was some significant interest in that, and Mr. Shigalas wisely recommended that it shouldn't be fact saying, hey, what do you want to do from making a recommendation? It really should be, because of accountability, it should be maybe sustainability or folks who are interested in approaching the district as well, because the Accountability Committee is an accountability committee as opposed to an advocacy committee.
Excuse me, can I interrupt Eric on that?
I'm sorry.
Just to follow, I just had a question. Is that, would we as a board need to take action on that, maybe Mr. Shigalas' question as well? Would, if we were going to look into something like that, does that need to be dealt with at the same time that we're doing in May when we're voting on everything? Or is this something to come that can happen?
It could come later, I think.
It can come later?
It can come later, yes. You do not have to deal with it at the May meeting.
Okay.
You do not.
Mario has been recommending, whose last name I don't want to mangle, frequently has been saying the cost, it can, cost keeps declining, it's like Moore's Law, the cost is declining while the capacity is increasing. So you're actually almost better off waiting a year or two before deciding what you're going to do, coupled with the roof is being designed as to carry the weight load anyway. So we don't have to make a decision on solar for, you know, this year, next year, we can, theoretically, they can just come in and install whatever.
Right.
But no, I think that was what was promising, was the fact that we could save some money, do something very good, and it wouldn't cost us any money. So that was, you know, so I think the issue is, I think as a board, we should expect sometime in the future seeing something come from a recommendation or suggestions to explore further.
Good, I would hope so.
The other, another component was a lot of discussion about fundraising. The fundraising committee is moving forward, the catch, of course, is that they're doing everything from scratch, so, but there is progress and headway. Hopefully, we'll see some, I don't know, we'll see some results hopefully in the near future. And also the archives and preservation, moving materials out, still some big items that need to move around. And I know there was some questions, it wasn't just me who's always asking about the floors, we had another gentleman who's very, Mr. Hanson is very familiar with the trades and was an alumnus, was saying, he was very emphatic, hey, what are we doing with those? So I think the Archives and Preservation Committee is moving forward as well. So fact, had another good meeting, they'll have another one after our next meeting as well. For the Alumni Foundation, they are having their Pancake Breakfast on April 19th. For those in the audience at home, or those in the audience, Mr. Zucker and Mr. Gainer are more than happy to sell you tickets, from 9:00 to 12:30 on the 19th, and the tours of the building will extend all the way till 2:00 in the afternoon as well. So it's a really good opportunity to visit the high school before the renovations. The Alumni Hall of Fame is on April 30th at 6:00 PM in Lander Haven, so you should be getting invitations for that soon as well. And then the heightsgear.com has three new items, two of which I'm giving to the superintendent if I was no longer on, if I wasn't on the board and in the audience, all of you would be getting them, but because I'm here now, I just have to, you know, give stuff to the superintendent. We have these wonderful Heights High lapel pins, a Tiger Nation and Heights High keychain, and then after, people have been asking for a long time, we now have Tiger Nation carb magnets, so about the four or five inches big, so those are really sharp, they came in as well. So three new items at heightsgear.com, and they'll have a big sale at the Pancake Breakfast as well. So those are my three, oh, I guess the only thing, it's not official yet, but the scholarships for the Alumni Foundation, they had over 150 different applications for the students.